Yes, sir.
It's popping up. You ready?
Oh, I was ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were busy getting ready.
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
Just trying to get to the agenda.
Councilmember Washington, if you could please turn your video on for the meeting.
Let's see if we have a councilmember Washington.
I tried to put the video on. It's telling me that I can't do it from my end. Were you able to hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
I hear you, but I'm not sure why it's not doing that.
When I push, when I push to start video, it tells me I don't have access to that.
We have our technical person in the house.
Are we okay?
The host disabled it.
Okay. I'm sorry, councilmember Washington is not required to be on video. My apologies.
Okay. That being said, we'll begin. I'll call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting, City of American Canyon, June 18, 2024. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its 300 sovereign states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas is excused. Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Oh, wait a minute.
We've lost councilmember Pierre Washington from Zoom. Vice Mayor David Oro.
Here.
And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
I'll try to reconnect with councilmember Washington.
Very good, thank you. There he is. Councilmember Washington, can you hear us? Do we have a technical assistance?
Mayor, we're trying to reach him on, it's not on our end, it's on his end. We're trying to reach him again.
Yes, thank you. Just that we need to have him here.
Mayor, I'd recommend we continue on. If he's able to zoom in, he will.
I was thinking so. Counsel, are you okay with, we do have a quorum here. We can continue with.
We have a quorum.
I think we should proceed.
Very good. Councilmember Joseph, do you agree? Very good, we'll move on then. We now have a report on closed session. Confirmation reportable action, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, the council convened in open session with councilmember Washington participating remotely as now under the Old Brown Act. After ascertaining that there were no comments, public comments on closed session, you adjourned a closed session at 5:34 PM. We concluded closed session at 6:27 PM. And there'll be a written report about reportable action on the agendized actions for closed session consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 5497.1B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on. Proximations and presentations are American Canyon Community Cats.
Well, good evening, your council.
Good evening.
... today from American Canyon Community Cats. As you know, this community group is strong. They got together at Department of Profit and.
Oh, sorry.
Organized. And they wanted to provide you an update on all of their accomplishments so far. So we have Gina Griggs here to present today. And she's the Director of Development for American Canyon Community Cats.
So, let's see. Trying to hit this slide. Put it to view. Just have to make sure it gets up there. Just a second. I'm just making sure they can do it.
David's trying to do something to make that.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right. So you should be able to just go like this.
Yeah.
And I'll just be right here. I just want to be right here in case it doesn't. No, it's not going to go. Oh, here. I have to go to, to like present. There should be like a slideshow. There. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
So just use the arrow.
Okay.
Use the arrow. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor. Hello, councilmembers, members of the audience. Thank you, Maria, for that introduction. My name is Gina Griggs, and I am the Director of Development for American Canyon Community Cats. Okay, I do need these. Okay, so I'd like to introduce the members of our group that are able to join us tonight. We have our board president here, Rose Maldonado. Our board secretary and treasurer, Andre Gardner, is unable to be here. She's still coming from work. And our community outreach directors, Rosie Negretti and Michelle Lady, who is also still at work at Jamison Humane. Imagine that. And we are very pleased to be here this evening and have this opportunity to present the work we've done since incorporation and talk about our exciting future plans. Our mission is to help all American Canyon cats live happy and healthy lives through rescue, shelter, rehabilitation, trap, neuter, vaccinate, return, adoption, and community-wide education. Our journey, we pride ourselves in being a grassroots community effort that began with a group of like-minded caring people wanting to help our community cats to live better lives. We attended many council meetings and then began meeting with Assistant City Manager Maria Ojeda in July of 2023. In November of 2023, we officially incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And here's what we've been up to since incorporation. Our first order of business was we got organized and started fixing kitties.
I'm sorry, the screen is going back and forth, in and out. Can we stabilize that, please?
How do I stabilize the screen? Do you want to unplug it and replug it back in? Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no, no, no. Okay.
We've got a loose connection.
Where's it connected to? Underneath. It's this one. Okay. Is it this? Is it this? No, it's way back here.
Oh, there it is.
Looks like it's back. Good, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'll try not to knock anything here. So we got organized and started fixing kitties. We had, as individuals, previously established relationships with both Napa Humane Spay and Neuter Clinic and Jamison Humane. Napa offered our newly established group five weekly appointments for spay and neuter, and Jamison offered us a 15 to 20 cat spay and neuter clinic for December of 2023. So we took them both up and started identifying locations where trapping was desperately needed. Our Jamison Humane Clinic in December of 2023, we trapped 15 community unowned cats. They were humanely trapped leading up to this event. They were all cared for with food, water, and trap pad changes twice daily by our volunteers. After the event, they were transported back to American Canyon where they were recovered for one to three days and then released back to their colonies or responsibly relocated to barn homes. Cats that live in colonies are cared for by colony caretakers. We also began filling our five weekly appointments with Napa Humane. I'm so glad it's working now. Did you see that? Okay, we kicked off 2024 with a hosted, community-wide lunch party, formally introducing ourselves to the community. At this event, we had member solicitation, snacks and goodies, trap education. Oh, dear.
Keep going. You're doing great.
Adoptable kitties, opportunity baskets, live music from my fellow commissioner, Clarence Mamoril, and volunteer recruitment and colony management education. I'm going to keep going. You're going to miss the transition. I'm sorry. Okay, our current programs, Community Cat Program, our TNVR, Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Release, Colony Management, Spay and Neuter, Foster and Adoption, and Community Outreach, the core and heart of our program. Our Community Cat Program, this program supports community or unowned cats who are cared for by colony caretakers. With our partnership with Napa Humane, each week, community cats in need of TNVR are identified by community members. Not distracting at all.
Give me just a moment. Your presentation's too important not for people to see it.
I did work a long time on the transitions.
We appreciate the effort put into it to you. This evening seems to be most is on our side. Thank you, and we apologize for that.
I'm sorry.
So we're going to go back a couple of slides. Give me a moment. And if you would, just advance through the left and the right mouse buttons and don't move.
Oh, yeah. Try not to touch anything. Oh, it's up there now. Next up is.
She has just announced the spelling.
But yeah, slideshow, right there. Slideshow. Have to go to slideshow. Go to. That's not the transition. It's not my slideshow.
Her transitions were just too much for the machine.
Sorry.
Mr. Hall, at some point, we could look into this, see what's going on with the equipment. Certainly, we can't take care of that tonight, but.
I agree, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, just a moment.
Am I waiting? Am I waiting? Okay, I'll wait. So, how are you? I think it's a transition. No, it's not a joking. It's the, it's the monitor. I'm trying not to knock anything. He's re-putting the whole thing, I think.
Doesn't drop that.
I'm sorry.
He's here to the back.
I expect you to wear that everywhere you go. You could entertain. I don't know. It's up to you. It's a way to get her to present. I'm happy to keep going. I mean, I could receive a solid purchase. It seems like. It seems, is it going to keep going though? Yeah. The machine looks. The problem is the messaging from here to back. Okay. It's up to you. So just ask.
If this is going to take some time, we do have a, two other meetings this evening.
Mayor Garcia, we have the ability to continue with the presentation. The problem is with the laptop conveying the message up to the big screen.
Yes.
If you want to continue with the presentation without.
Are you comfortable listening and just not seeing the visual? Can you just listen to the presentation?
Well, I am given, I mean, I would love to see the presentation, but I'm okay with the present. It would just.
That doesn't seem possible. So if you're comfortable still presenting, we're just going to go with the oral presentation.
All right.
Apologies, Gina.
We could look into that.
I'm sorry. You have to just look at me now.
No.
Nothing more entertaining. Okay. So, Jamison Humane Clinic, December of 2023. And then we started working with Napa Humane, five weekly appointments a week, which we have done continuously ever since. All right, then we had our lunch party. That's the slide we were on. Our current programs, we did that. You guys can't see any of this. Okay. Then we had an additional clinic with Jamison Humane on April 30th, and we identified the Napa Compost and Recycle Center and Transfer Station as having lots of community cats that were being inconsistently fed and not cared for, including kittens living in very, very unfortunate circumstances. So we spent a collective 480 hours, six volunteers did, over the course of three days to humanely trap and then transport these cats to Jamison Humane. We had our clinic, we transported them back, we recovered them, and then we did release them back to that site. But we partnered with the management there to place shelters and ensure that those cats would be fed. Okay, Colony Management and Support. This program supports unowned community cats to live in safe locations and be provided with proper food, water, and shelter. And we support our colony caretakers to do that. Spay and Neuter Program. This program supports the spay and neuter of all cats in need in order to prevent unowned cats from living and dying on the streets without proper care. Because we know people get pets, they get out, and this is how the, the problem begins. Our Community Outreach and Education. This program supports ongoing education to community members to assist us in our mission and goals, and it is the core and heart of our group. We partner with our community members through Facebook Messenger, our webpage, community events, fostering 101 classes, kitten education, trap training classes, Meet Me in the Street events, and quarterly membership newsletter. Our Foster and Adoption Program. This is our newest program currently in partnership with both Napa County Animal Shelter and Jamison Humane. This program supports the rescue of kittens born to unowned community cats to be taken off the street, fostered, medically treated, and then adopted into loving homes. We identify the parents as well, get them fixed, release them back to where we found them. So, since incorporation, we have helped 257 felines. Now, since incorporation, this means November of 2023. So in the past seven months, we have humanely trapped, fixed, rescued kittens, et cetera, in the numbers of 257. If you take half of those cats and assume that they're female, and those cats have between six and eight kittens each, and they can have up to four to five litters a year, it's just shy of 3,000 unwanted kittens that would have been born that now will not be. Moving forward, our core, core goals, our TNR, rescue, education, continued partnerships with Napa Humane, Jamison Humane, Napa County Animal Shelter, City of American Canyon, local businesses, and community members, exploring additional spay and neuter options. We are working with other counties and other clinics to get as many cats as much help as possible. Continuing to develop our AC Cats Foster and Adoption Program and secure a facility for rehabilitation and foster. Funding and Sustainability. Funding and Sustainability is going to be assured through partnerships with cities, counties, and other nonprofits, business sponsors, local and multi-county, individual memberships solicited by our lunch party, Meet Me in the Street, mailings, Facebook Messenger, and people that we partner with. People will call and say, I have a couple cats, and I've been feeding them, and I think there might be kittens. And we partner with them, and we teach them how to trap. And they assist us in the trapping, and we get the cats fixed, and then they continue to feed for us, and they let us know if they have any what we call new arrivals. In-kind donations, we have a bin at Tractor Supply. We accept donations of all kind food, cat food, and coolers that we turn into outdoor shelters. And we are going to have our first annual fundraiser in October of this year. Hi, are we ready?
I think so.
Oh, that's exciting. I have two slides left.
Where's the slideshow? There it is.
Okay, here's all the slides you missed. I won't read them again, I promise.
Oh, it's nice.
You have to see the cute kittens, though. There's the owl we rescued from the Napa Compost and Recycle Center when we were trapping cats. He went to the wildlife rescue, and it's about ready to be re-released. Okay, so here's my transitions. Colony Management and Support, Spay and Neuter, Community Outreach, those kittens are available for adoption, anyone like them. Foster and Adoption, that kitten has been adopted. Mom and Babies, this is our 257 felines helped slide. Moving Forward, Partnerships. Funding and Sustainability. Our Contact Information, that cat has also been adopted. Isn't he cute? And to our supporters, our partners, our true leaders, our future volunteers, our sponsors and members, and for having us this evening, we look forward to continuing our mission to provide all cats with happy and healthy lives, saving one life at a time. We are American Canyon Community Cats, and thank you for having us. And I have gifts.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, yes. Card, thank you. Let's hope back. All right. Well, thank you very much for that. I really, I know we all really appreciate the, the work we do, and you do, with respect to taking care of our old feline friends. Vice Mayor Oro.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, that's pretty incredible. If you guys, you guys came in here and you were the cat people, and we're like, I, I could barely see a cat half the time because I'm carrying a dog, and they're gone beforehand, you know? And you guys, that's remarkable work. Congratulations to your focus, your energy, your effort, and your commitment to that whole thing. That, that, that's amazing. Is there any idea how many other cats are out there? 257? I mean, do you feel like that's just the tip of the iceberg? Really? Interesting. Okay. Well, thank you for your continued work, and I'm glad you were able to bring this attention to the city and, and continue doing what you're doing, because obviously, the cats need it, and the community is, I'm impressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph, comment?
Yes. First of all, I agree with the vice mayor. It's very impressive accomplishments with, you know, relatively little help. So I think that's great. I'm reminded years ago, when I worked in the city of Atascadero, there was a similar humane society that was very powerful, frankly. And, you know, when they got upset, you had to pay attention. So I look forward to you guys becoming that same powerful influence in this community, making sure we take care of cats. And who knows, you may take on dogs one of these days. Good job. Thank you for your effort.
And just to be clear, we don't want them to be upset. We want them to be happy. We're not encouraging upset.
I, I see politics a different way. It's like, okay, they're upset, we have to act, you know? So I hope you become influential and effective in getting resources that you need. How's that?
Councilmember Washington, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Gina, for the presentation. I was able to see it from out here, so thank you. But I also want to thank Maria, our Assistant City Manager, for being involved as well. I have attended a couple of the 101 classes and, and learnt a lot about what's happening with the feral cats in the community. But shout outs to all of you who are involved with taking the time to take care of this and to educate the rest of the city on the positives and/or the negatives of the feral cat colonies. But I think it's great that you guys have done that, Gina. You know, what you're doing is, is amazing. So thank you.
Good work, thank you. When I first moved to American Canyon, it was an older house, had been empty for a while, and discovered 11 kittens in my backyard. Fortunately, new neighbor for me down the corner was the cat lady for American Canyon. So she was able to find homes for them. But I think your, the work you're doing certainly encompasses a lot more area in the city, and it's more than just somebody volunteering. It's an organized body of people doing good for the community. Thank you. That being said, we'll move on with our agenda. Public comments, items not on closed session or open session? Do you have a card?
Public comment, do we have any cards? Public comment?
Yes, we do. Yvonne Beginsky.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
I'm Yvonne Beginsky of Napa County. I wanted to come up here today to just kind of talk a little bit about the property at the SDG warehouses at Commerce Court. I know that not much can be done about that development at this time. Last November, the city held an environmental public hearing on the one remaining left, property left on that Commerce Court at 10:55. The meeting location was changed, and the hearing was late, on a late Friday afternoon during heavy commute traffic, so we didn't have a chance to attend. So we really missed the opportunity to get more information. But Jeanette and I, we did go out to that property, and it's sandwiched between two newly constructed warehouses. And we saw the cleared land, the trees all gone, everything graded, and the property in question was packed with cars of the laborers who were working on the two adjacent warehouses. We checked and double-checked the location because we thought we had it wrong. How could the city be asking for an environmental impact report on property that had been fully graded, had no trees on it, and was now being used as a parking lot? We were and are very confused. Then this past week, a draft of an environmental impact report was released for public review on the 1055 Commerce Court property. So the environmental impact report has not been fully approved by this council, and the public can still comment. However, the property, except for a small section surrounded by orange plastic fencing, has already been totally destroyed for wildlife. This property is adjacent to the Wetlands Edge Walk that this community is so proud of. In fact, right on the other side of the property line is where I discovered the large numbers of monarch butterflies this past February. Do we have monarchs overwintering in those eucalyptus trees? I put the question out on Next Door and received several responses and sightings of monarchs in the region. The only verified monarch overwintering site we have now is Mare Island, which is seven miles south. So it's entirely possible that some are roosting here as well. But we don't know what wildlife lives here because everything that is on this property that would sustain life is gone. It was graded long before this environmental review was started. The public, your public, is, is asking for the warehouse building to stop. Take a look at these environmental reports. It's not just the wildlife that's being decimated, or as they put in the report, evicted. It's also the significant and unavoidable impact of the diesel emissions in the air, the health effects on the children, the nearby school, the increase in traffic, the impacts on the wetlands, and the impact on our carbon footprint. The public review for this warehouse will expire in 30 days. Please take time to read it and understand what it has done to the environment. There will be noise, lights, construction emissions, diesel fuel, more emissions, increased traffic, and it will make a significant impact on the wetlands, the wetlands you are so proud of saving. Let's work together in finding another way to support in developing a habitat conservation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jeanette Guiz.
Oh, okay.
Canceling that one. We have Valerie Zizak-Morris.
Hello, everybody. I'm Valerie Zizak-Morris, President/CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say that I'm here tonight just to thank the community, thank the city staff, the council members for the success of Meet Me in the Street. Meet Me in the Street was designed to support economic recovery post-pandemic. to support them and give them an event and an opportunity. And what we have learned about Meet Me in the Street, that it has become the most popular and successful thing that we could have brought to American Canyon, connecting community, residents with business. And we're seeing the success of nonprofit organizations being able to spread the word, like the Community Cats, the County of Napa coming down and bringing their services, the City of American Canyon being able to promote and spread the word with the different things that they're spreading to our community members, and of course, the small businesses in American Canyon, Napa County, and beyond, being able to sell their products here. And of course, we're extremely proud of Kids Commerce, which is a product of Meet Me in the Street, having youth vendors that want to come out to our community and sell their items. So, I'm just here tonight to say thank you to public works who keeps our street safe, who protects the ends of the road. Thank you to Jason Hawley, who sat with me for hours brainstorming where the best place to put Meet Me in the Street is, and with our city council, who supports the idea and really comes together and makes this an amazing event. So, I'm just here tonight to say thank you all for making Meet Me in the Street great, supporting our business community, and really living the vision that we had as the Chamber of Commerce for Meet Me in the Street. So, thank you all, and I just want to say I hope to see this community event continue to be safe, fun, and friendly for everybody in American Canyon. And outside of that, I want to say to the American Canyon Community Cats that in 2018, the American Canyon Chamber did a survey to the business community, and the number-one problem on that survey was stray cats within the business community. So, not only are you serving the residents, but you're also serving the business community as well with your initiative. So, thank you for the work you're doing, and you know we're here to support you as the Chamber in any way we can, and we just want to continue to be great community partners. Thank you all.
Alright. Thank you for Meet Me in the Street. My goodness, that is just, wow. Uh, I think more people are being, are obviously finding it. I don't know if you get a head count, it goes in, but it's, it's, uh, it's huge. And I know it takes a very lot of effort to do that, so thanks for you and all those who help you out with that. And we look forward to, uh, first, yeah?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday in July? Yes, again. Alright. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
I have no other speaker cards. I also have no hands raised online.
Right, thank you very much. With that said, we will move on, close public comment on these items, and move on to agenda changes. If there's no need to pull an item to discuss it, I'll accept a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar. I'll, I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Orol?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on, there are no public hearings this evening. We're going on to a business item. It's the fiscal year 2024-2025 salary schedule. I am obligated to read the following prior to us moving into this. Pursuant to Government, California Government Code Section 5495(c)(3), a recommendation has been made to adopt a salary schedule as presented, and the resolution enumerated, enumerates the salary schedule, which includes local agency executives. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a normal city business we do each year ahead of the salary sched, uh, each of the new fiscal year. It's a schedule of the salaries paid to all full-time city employees, and in the, attached to the resolution is the actual schedule or listing of the salaries, and so staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution. We've accounted for these salaries in this public schedule and the budget you approved at your last meeting. That's all we have?
Oh, yeah? Okay.
It would be appropriate to take public comment if there isn't any.
Yes, right. If there's no staff hesitation, that's it. Take public comment on this matter. Staff okay with, council okay with public comment now? Public comment on this matter is open.
I have no speaker cards. There are no, there are no hands raised online.
Okay. If there's no public comment on this matter, I'll close public comment. We'll return to council for further discussion, desired action.
If there's no discussion, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution.
Resolution number 2024. Next in order, a resolution in the City Council of the City of American Canyon approving the fiscal year 2024-2025 salary schedules.
I'll second that. Motion second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Orol?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you. I will move on to management staff oral reports.
I don't believe we have any, Mayor. I didn't actually ask, but I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, no, I forgot, Brent has something.
Yeah, Mr. Cooper.
Giving me the little signal, Brent has something. I know you told me what it was, but I can't remember, so it's gonna be a surprise for all of us.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, wanted to inform the council and the public of some important news happening with our neighbors to the north in Napa County. The Napa Airport has a compatibility plan that's created these imaginary lines that arc across the city, and the purpose for it is to make sure that land development in American Canyon doesn't, and elsewhere near the airport, doesn't conflict with airport operations. This plan is decades old, and in part, due to leadership on the part of American Canyon, the county is updating this decades-old plan and has made some positive changes. This plan is open for the public review right now. There'll be a hearing on 17th of July at the Napa Airport Land Use Commission. Some of the most important change to it is there is one of the imaginary lines called the D-zone, where residential uses aren't permitted. The D-zone arcs across the city. It starts around the Wetlands Trailhead, and then goes over Oath Hill, passes just north of City Hall, and clips the northern part of Watson Ranch. Everything north of that, under the current plan, housing's not permitted. Because the plan is so old, those old limitations are no longer valid, and fortunately, because of the city's participation in the process, the county has listened to reason and has modified this plan to allow residential uses some distance north of where it's not allowed today. And that will open up new opportunities for flexibility in the part of American Canyon to plan for its future. So, just want to bring that to your attention, and we can, of course, put on our website and, and get the word out.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Any other comment from council?
I was gonna comment. I received a notice, so I'm within the 300 or 1,000 feet of the boundaries, so I may show up.
I did as well. I, on the edge of the D-zone myself, sir.
Alright, we may go down there and make public comment.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all we had, Mayor. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. We'll move on to Mayor/Council Comment Committee Reports. Councilmember Joseph?
I did not write a, or submit a written run. There weren't any official committee actions, so the two big things were Meet Me in the Street, that was bigger and better than it has been, so that was great. And of course, Juneteenth, just last Sunday, everything went very well. We had great participation, no snafus, as far as I know. So, two great events, and I was happy to be at both of them.
Very good. Vice Mayor Orol?
I have nothing to report, but I will be attending tomorrow the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation Board Meeting, which is the governing body for Visit Napa Valley, and I'll report back on July 16th on that one, and then I will also be attending, along with the mayor, the Association of Bay Area Governments meeting on Friday. I will report back on that as well. And the only other report I have is I just returned from Cabo San Lucas with my family, and it was great. Thank you.
Alright. Well, you know, it's, uh, you got, you got a bit of a tan there, yeah, yeah. Around the sunglasses. Thank you. Well, I have something to report from the City Select Committee. For those who may not be aware, City Selection Committee has representatives of the mayors of all cities in Napa County. And one of our responsibilities of City Select Committee is to point to various commissions, committees within the county, one of them being LAFCO. And, uh, we, we had an issue come up for us, and we had passed the resolution today, which in effect says, "We want to account for everybody making sure they attend meetings, because there's vital information that needs to be coming home, discussed in the interest of each jurisdiction, and the results of that discussion needs to come back to each jurisdiction." So, we can have that back-and-forth conversation. So, to make assurance that people, there's accountability for reporting, we voted to, on a resolution that would include a provision to, and I'll read it, to remove or recommend the removal of committee members from assigned board, commission, or agency appointment due to three or more unexcused meeting absences. So, that gives us a bit of flexibility there in terms of being able to evaluate that. But I think it's been, in 22 years, it's been very rare for me to miss a meeting. I know other obligations are out there, and we don't understand it. Councilmember Pierre Washington is meeting remotely. That's a satisfactory way of attending a meeting, but we do need to have assurance of that. So, that was a piece of business done by the City Selection Committee today. It went very well. It was a unanimous vote. Again, my compliments to Meet Me in the Street. That is an awesome event, and I think it will only continue to grow. Frankly, I usually get about three hours to get from Dan Rose, James, to Elliot, but there's more people there this time than my grandson came, so I got, I didn't quite get to the end of it this time, but we had good fun together, you and I. So, let's see, State Route 37, met with MTC, discussing improvements on the State Route 37, a very good presentation on San Pablo Bay, the Wetlands Restoration Program that's going on there. I do reiterate from time to time that the, we need to take into that picture for the traffic congestion issues, the alternate route, which is in Pidion Raceway over the north end of the bay, through American Canyon. Well, now, a lot of it's going at the 12, at the airport, going east toward Vaquaville Fairfield. It's a housing issue, and it's extremely backed up. And I do wish we would pay more attention to that, particularly when we start tolling, there'd be people more interested in taking that route. AC Cert, American Canyon Cert team, we had a good study session on fire extinguishers. Now, I know how to work one now, and it was very helpful information. Napa Valley Waste Management Authority, we got the budget done. Phil M. American Canyon had a great celebration over at Shenandoah Park, celebrating Independence Day, all the cuisine and, and fun and activities that goes along with celebrating. And likewise, Juneteenth was a very good. Brenda Knight does an incredibly hard work, hard job, very spirited into where she's going, and she loves this event, and she did a wonderful event for us again this year, and I look forward to that again next year. And that would conclude my report. Thank you. Oh, we had graduations and promotions, too. Just love that. Okay, future agenda items? Not hearing any? Okay, thank you. And we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene our other meetings. Thank you for adjourned from the City Council. Who to take up next? Community Service Commission, is that it? Yeah, Park and Community Services Commission, yes. PCS?